I'd like to call the Laverne City Council meeting to order. If you can please stay seated. Our VFW Post 12034 is going to post the colors and listen to the Pledge of Allegiance. So David.
Color guard, tidge, hut. At a half step, forward, hut. Column right, hut. Mark time, hut. Detail, vote, right face. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please face the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, hut. Color bear, advance to post the colors. Ready, hut. Return. Outward face, face. Left face. Forward, hut. Column left, hut. Mark time, hut. Detail, vote, this way, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, VFW Post 12034. Just want to let everybody know that Veterans Day is next Monday, and the post will be celebrating on Veterans Day at 11 o'clock. November 11th used to be Armistice, now it's Veterans Day. And they will be at the post doing a celebration for Veterans Day. And there's something really, really special going to be there that day. So I would advise getting there and being a part of it. It takes about an hour, should be done by 12 o'clock, so please attend. At this time, I'd like to call the post up to stand in front of us. Gentlemen?
You want us up front?
Right up, right up front.
Okay. Left face, right. Column right, hut. Mark time, hut. Detail, vote, left face.
These are just a few of our post members that are here tonight. Typically this night, we celebrate new entries into the service along with the parents. Usually the service member is deployed and not with us. So the parents get the flag. This, unfortunately, we do not have any new members that who we've been notified. So we've asked the post to come in and do some stuff that they normally do at some of the ceremonies. And so I've asked each other to identify themselves and say a little bit about themselves, the service and so forth. So we'll start here and just pass the mic. Gentlemen?
My name is Orlando Jackson, Sergeant First Class, United States Army, retired. I did 21 years in the military. I was an airborne infantryman. And then early, like the very end of my career, I served in Bosnia, Iraq, and Afghanistan.
My name is Jeff Sanchez, retired US Army, Master Sergeant. Three years Germany with the 30th Infantry Division. Then later on with Army Reserves, deployed to OIF, Operation Rent Your Freedom. Spent years as an instructor, taught a lot of soldiers how to defend themselves, how to go into convoys, what to do in the case of an attack in combat. Was proud to serve and wish I could serve some more.
My name is Rosendo Reyes, retired First Sergeant Marine Corps. 24 years in the military, two tours in Iraq. First part of it I did Special Ops, and then the rest was pretty much infantry. It wouldn't change my life in any way or any form. That's just the way it goes.
Carl Bauer, I was in Vietnam in 1966 and 1968, Sergeant. I was an engineer, but because we were a company of 220 soldiers with rifles, we wound up being most of the time in infantry. Although I was an engineer in Vietnam. That was it.
I have to tell you first, I'm pretty nervous. My name is Joseph Magallanes, Staff Sergeant. Retired with 21 years in the Army. I served in Korea, and two tours in Korea. One in the DMZ, one with 44th Engineers. They did, or we did a lot of roads and bridges and crossings and rivers. But don't tell anybody that. I also served in Colorado, Germany, in a place called Augsburg. Also, I'm a proud father of two Marines, my daughter and my son. My son is retired. He's a policeman over in... One of those cities. Over near San Diego area over there. Chula Vista.
It's gonna get worse.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That's okay. Bad day for daddy.
Okay.
John Chauvin, Sergeant, United States Marine Corps, 1963 to 1967. In my boot camp at Paris Island, South Carolina. Infantry training, Camp Lejeune, North Carolina. I was assigned to a field company, went through lock-on training. Ultimately from line company, advanced to regimental headquarters at Second Infantry Training Regiment at Camp Pendleton. And after two and a half years there, sent to Vietnam in 1966, '67. Where I served with Force Logistics Command at Headquarters. And I also was a swim instructor and utilized that also as I was at The China Beach. Not The China Beach of TV, but The China Beach. Lot different, semper fine.
I'm the one that the Marines and Army will make fun of because I'm Sergeant Daniel Lopez with the United States Air Force. I was an aircraft electrician, SAC Command and TAC, B-52s and F-4s. Vietnam veteran. Was very proud to serve and very proud to be commander of Laverne's VFW Post 12034, Banner Brothers. Thank you.
My name is David Alvarado, and I've been a resident here of Laverne for 40 years now, and I love this town. I served in the Army from 1967 to 1969. And I was deployed to the DMZ in Korea. All my training was done at Fort Ord, and I was trained to be a field communications. And when I got to Korea, they changed that MOS to artillery. And eventually I became a radio carrier for Forward Observer. So I spent a lot of time moving around the DMZ area for 14 months. My 12-month tour turned out to be 14. But when I was done, they said, "We're just gonna discharge you when you get home." And I said, "Thank you." But I'm very proud to do the duty I did. Thank you.
As I am listening to these gentlemen, and I am fortunate enough to know each and every one of them, we have over 100 years of service to our country standing in front of us right now that keep us safe. And I think it's an honor for us to honor them tonight. So thank you very much for being here. I've asked the commander of VFW Post 12034, Daniel Lopez, to tell us a little bit about what this post does other than serving us and keeping us free. They do a lot of good deeds on our community and surrounding communities. Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Besides the obvious attendance that you see us at Memorial Day, Laverne's great Fourth of July parade, and Veterans Day, which is next week, every second Tuesday of the month, we have a VA representative that comes out to our post to help veterans with any medical paperwork that, with issues that they may have. We also have an honor guard that we provide funeral services for veterans that have gone. You will find us out at Riverside National Cemetery, Rose Hills Forest Lawn. Up in Pasadena at Mountain View. We provide color guards, either posting or presenting the colors for schools. We've done also for several Congresswomen, Grace Napolitano, Judy Chu, Norma Torres. We're asked to attend some high schools, talk to history students about our military services for them to get a better understanding. I think that kind of covers most of what we do. There's a lot of other stuff.
It probably gets us started. That is my idea. 100 years of service, thank you, gentlemen, for your, for your time away from your families. I know for six years, my mother and father were scared to death of what I was doing. And I would like to ask Charlie Rosales, a Vietnam veteran, Army veteran, please stand. And also let us say thank you to you, Charlie. So that's you, Charlie.
Color guard, tidge, hut. Left face. At a half step, forward, hut. Column left, hut. Hut time, hut. Detail, vote, this way, this, thank you, gentlemen.
A roll call. Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Hepburn?
Here.
Mayor Protum Rosales?
Here.
Mayor Peter?
Here.
We will move to number five announcements. We have a speaker card from Sherri Guss, President of the Historical Society.
Good evening. I'd like to announce some activities coming up at the Historical Society. First, I urge people to join us, the Laverne Bike Coalition and the Laverne Historical Society, for a bicycle tour of pioneer homes of Laverne. I'll put flyers out for that. That's going to be happening the 23rd of November. So we're gonna meet at 9 o'clock at Coons Park and look at some of the homes of the people we visited when we did our cemetery tour on the 20th of October. So for those of you who missed the cemetery tour, they're still there. You're not gonna be going anywhere. And we'll visit a few more the next year. So same time next year, we'll be back at the cemetery tour. I do have...
Can I ask the force to come back?
Yeah, yeah, my hot dinner's man, that's right.
You may see them at the houses, too.
This is true, yeah, they were, maybe on, they may be there at the upstairs window, who knows? So I wanted to make another announcement, and that is that Friday afternoon, I spent a couple hours with the producer of the TV series Restored, which is on the DIY Network. They're looking for a house in Laverne for restoration. So we drove the producer all over Laverne. I think we swept him off his feet. And we visited several houses that they would call inspirational houses, houses that have already been restored. And we stopped, the homeowners were in. We just both, they went up, knocked on the door, and they all said, "Wow, come on in. We love Brett Waterman, we want to be on television." So maybe that will happen. But if you own an historic home, you're interested in doing some restoration, here's your opportunity to do that and be on television. So I'll put out handouts for that. Coming up in February, hopefully we'll have a house to restore. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherri.
You bet.
Her personal experience of cemetery tour was fun.
That's right. That was Mr. Dixie over there. And Mr. Kendrick.
That was my father. Okay, let's, any other announcements? George?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, residents. I just want to talk a little bit about programs for November. It's gonna be a busy, busy month. Every Tuesdays this month, we are gonna have our parent-child workshops. It's gonna be November 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This five-week series is designed to create a bond between the child and the parent. There are gonna be age-appropriate toys, crafts, and things like that. And also for each week, there is going to be a local resource specialist whose focus will be different aspects of child development. So it could be nutrition, it could be hygiene, it could be car safety, it could be language specialties and things like that.
Are you targeting a certain age group?
Yes, we are, children three years of age.
Perfect.
And there is a limited space, registration is required. Also Tuesdays, we are gonna have, this is gonna be November 5th, 19th, and 26th, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is good for ages 6 through 11. And we're gonna have after-school adventures. There's gonna be gaming, crafts, and skiing activities. And this month, we're also starting our new Smarty Pants Storytime session. And that's gonna be every Wednesday this month. That's gonna be November 13th, 20th, 27th, from 11:30 till 12:00 p.m. This is for ages from 2 to 5 with adult caregivers. And also there's limited space, registration is required for that also. Saturday, November 23rd, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., we are having a Dino Gobble Vember program, which will focus on dinosaurs. There'll be a tea party, treats, games, and crafts, and a special pre-star guest. This is appropriate for ages 5 through 12. Friday, November 15th, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., we are having a pumpkin catapult challenge. The title says it all. It's good for ages 5 through 12.
Where?
On Monday, November 25th, at 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., we are having a teen advisory board. This is basically, it's available to teens who want to make a difference in the community, want to tell us what they would like to see in the library, what they would like to, you know, what kind of titles, what kind of programs, and things like that. For adults, Saturday, November 16th, from 12:00 to 1:30, we are having a Smart Gardening program. And then we are having a celebration of Native American History Month. We are having two programs. One is Saturday, November 16th, from 2:30 to 3:30. That's gonna be a corn husk doll making group program. It's appropriate for ages 18 and up. And then on Thursday, November 7th, from 6:30 to 8:00, we are having songs and stories from Native America. We're gonna have the founder of Redbird, Corina Roberts. She's gonna explore the different tradition, traditional songs and stories of that Hoopa, Wasagi, Cherokee, Pomo, Chuma, Tongwa, and Algonquin Indian tribes. And this is for all ages. So there's a little bit of everything for, you know, for somebody. Somebody, there's something for somebody for everybody here. So please join us, these programs are free. The parent-child workshops and the storytime do require registration because there is a limited space.
Sorry, you can do our registration, that's completely true. Thank you, George. What a great array of activities coming up in only one month, so that's great. Anybody else for announcements? Anybody on the desk, announcements? Just a reminder about Veterans Day, 11 o'clock next Monday.
Where's that at?
Veterans Hall.
Roy.
You're there every time. Open your paws and prayer.
Roy wants everyone else to know where I go.
Anita and Wheeler. Okay, let's move to item six, consent calendar. We've got a request, you polled items 6E, which is a 1 and 2 item. If you can have a motion for approval of the others, please. Second, vote please. Okay, 6E, we polled you. Kelly, has requested this to be?
I just wanted to say, we had Chief Paz at one of our LP3 meetings. And I saw this today, and it just kind of struck me because somebody said, he was talking about Prop 47, Prop 57, AB 109, and so forth like that, how they impacted his job. And somebody in the audience said, "Well, who approved that?" And Chief Paz went like this. "We all did." So in any event, California legislators, they sure look to have these little flowery things. Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2020. I just want to remind everybody that Prop 47 used to be the Safe Neighborhoods and School Act. Please read it. That's all.
Thank you. So item 2, you want to make comments on?
No, thanks.
Just one, okay, okay, great. Anybody else want to make comments on this item? Okay, anybody up here want to make a comment on this comment? I do. Hugh is absolutely correct. AB 109, which was passed by the Assembly, it was an assembly bill passed by the Assembly, signed into law in 2011. AB, or Prop 47, which is the Safe School and Neighborhoods Act, totally mislabeled, dumped felonies to misdemeanors. And the last one just took a whole bunch of what the state says nonviolent crimes, which are horrible. And they're allowing these early releases of these people. So combined, there's 100,000 people on our streets that should be in our state prison. That's what Prop 47 in the election in November of 2020 is gonna do, is really tighten the loose on this and put us back to some law and order because the police officers are, hands are tied. And please, please be conscious of what these things mean. And as Hugh said, please read what these are before you vote because Prop 47 was voted 40, 60% and Prop 60, Prop 57 was approved by 65%. And they were horrible, horrible laws that went into effect, so thank you. And please make sure in November of 2020 that this is probably one of your most important votes. Okay, let's vote on the approval of 6E 1 and 2, please. Could I have a motion? Most approve. Vote please, second. Okay, we'll move to item 7, public hearings. This is an appeal of case 38-19CUP, and this is a continuing hearing. And Boakop will give the intro.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This is case number 38-19CUP. The applicant, Mr. Ray Vajani, submitted an application for a conditional use permit requesting to operate a U-Haul vehicle rental agency at 1712 Arrow Highway in conjunction with his existing auto repair business. Ray Auto Repair is located in an existing building between Park Street and A Street within the commercial manufacturing zone of the Arrow Corridor specific plan. In December of 2018, Ray Auto Repair opened. The use was the same as the previous business, which was autodynamics. Therefore, a conditional use permit was not required. Soon after opening the business, U-Haul offered the applicant the opportunity to supplement his auto repair income by installing hitches on U-Haul vehicles. A U-Haul representative informed the applicant that if he wanted to install hitches for the U-Haul, he would be required to become a small U-Haul truck retail dealer. Vehicle rental agencies are listed within the Arrow Corridor specific plan as conditionally permitted uses within the commercial manufacturing zone. The applicant is proposing to operate a U-Haul vehicle rental agency as an additional use to the existing auto repair shop. Staff has had several discussions and expressed concerns to the applicant and the U-Haul representative over the last several months regarding the operation of a U-Haul rental agency in conjunction with that business. According to the Arrow Corridor specific plan, vehicle repair shop parking requirements shall be one space per every 250 square feet of gross building area. The total square footage of the building is 2,140 square feet. Therefore, a total of nine parking spaces is required. The site plan provided for four parking spaces, including one handicap space, a compact space, and two standard parking spaces. Therefore, there's a parking deficit of five parking spaces. After multiple site visits by staff, it was even questionable as to whether or not a parking stall could fit under the existing overhang on the property due to items being stored under the tarps in those locations. The applicant believes that the four parking spaces are sufficient due to the option of on-street parking spaces on Park Avenue. Staff has explained to the applicant that the parking required for the building shall be on their private property and not on-street parking, public parking areas. The existing vehicle repair business without the addition of a U-Haul sales is nonconforming to the current zoning regulations due to the lack of required parking. Therefore, the addition of another use to an existing nonconforming site cannot be supported by staff. Staff and the Development Review Committee recommended denying this request to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted to deny it. The applicant is now here appealing that decision. But based on the limited size of the property and the existing parking deficit, staff recommends denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's denial of case number 38-19CUP. The applicant is here if you have any questions of them, and I'm also available from staff. Thank you.
Any, just a minute, any questions of Candace? Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will ask the applicant to please come forward and present the case that you have, that you want. Great? Open?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. My name is Mike Castuma, and I am a very good friend of the applicant, Ray Vajani. He has worked in Laverne, as far as I know, at a local vehicle maintenance facility for about 16 years. And he decided to open his own business, which he did in the end of December, beginning of January, right near Park Avenue and Arrow Highway. He's also a client of mine. So I know there's been some rumors going around, so I'd like to be able to kind of put down the rest right now. I'm not charging Ray a nickel. We'll call it pro per, call it what you may. But when we heard what city with the U-Haul had offered him, had offered him, he asked me what I thought of the idea. I said, "I think it's a great idea." I mean, he loves doing that kind of work, other than just working on vehicles. So if he asked me, "What do I do next?", I says, "Well, what we have to do is go to City Hall. Everything's got to be legal." So I went down to City Hall and met with the staff to find out what the requirements are, what one has to do, and staff gave me paperwork and explained the process. There is a little misunderstanding as far as what the U-Haul offered him. U-Haul basically said that whatever kind of vendor you are to U-Haul, you have to be a dealer. In this case, it's pretty much a dealer on paper. In fact, Mr. Gary Smith, who's here this afternoon, Eric, has offered just to have him have one small van on his property. He has really no intentions of being an agency, in other words, renting U-Haul vehicles. All he wants to do is stay us by U-Haul's requirement of on being a dealer on paper so that if anybody asks what's going on, they're all covered. He will probably end up doing one or two, one or two hitches every few weeks, maybe two or three hitches a month. But he has no intention of renting or acting as an agency for U-Haul, and the Regional Director is here to confirm that. When I met with staff, if I and Ray or Gary knew that whatever, I should say, whatever we had, whatever we did to try to make this work, it wasn't going to work. And I didn't realize that, neither did Ray, I got stuck with telling him this, that based on the fact that the current business, which is automotive repair, and Ray's business, they're nonconforming, meaning, I didn't realize it, I didn't hear the word "nonconforming" as far as this is concerned. So whatever they want to do, here Ray moves in in January, whatever he wanted to do with his business, he would have to basically apply for a conditional use permit, which is what he is doing now. Based on the business that he's leasing from and his own business being nonconforming, he's out of luck. I think it was probably, probably could have been explained to him, I think, when he leased the business, this is what you can't do. As far as parking goes, the current person he leases space from, all he does is fix engines. Nobody brings a vehicle to that location, no one. He either picks up an engine, or the engine is delivered to his location. So there's, you know, as far as parking spaces, he doesn't need any. Hasn't used any parking spaces in years. Originally, it was told to us that there would be five spaces required. Got all kinds of paperwork here, staff and myself and Ray. And then in July, on July 2nd, we were informed by staff that there was an error and that five now is nine. And I was the lucky one to tell Ray that. And so there was a, there's a problem. You can't get nine spaces in the area in which vehicles are parked. They're not going to have that many. And as it turns out, when I asked staff, I said, "Let me ask you a question, okay? How many, if he brings the number of vehicles that U-Haul originally suggested from two to one, how many spaces would he need then?" I thought it was a question that made some sense. And staff said, "It's still nine." So I said, "Well, what happens if we just scratch this whole thing?" And he has spent thousands of dollars, between U-Haul and Ray, thousands of dollars in applications, the suggestion of staff, an architect was hired. So this, about $2,000 or $3,000 invested in this. If we knew then what we know now, things would have been different. So I said to staff, "What happens if we just forget about U-Haul? How many spaces would he need then?" The answer was zero. Zero! So I said, "Well, wait a minute, this, what about, I mean, these are spaces for his customers." And she says, "It's still zero about the Affordable Disability Act. That space not required. No ADA, no spaces, no minds, nothing." A lot of this doesn't make any sense to me, I know it doesn't make any sense to Gary and Ray, but all he wants to do is have the opportunity to put a couple of hitches on a U-Haul vehicle. I mean, it's not going to be, he's not going to get rich over it, that's for sure. Speaking of getting rich, not long after this whole process started, he found out that his wife, who's been in the Dior business decades, got laid off. That was going to obviously money to help the business because the business he's in, like we all, I mean, a lot of business owners here, it's a tough business, just making pay business go. I see businesses going out of business every day, not just in Laverne, but in surrounding cities, especially metros. So it's difficult. Whatever the city wants him to do as far as the number of vehicles, we've already informed the city, whatever hours they want him to operate, not a problem. As far as U-Haul vehicles, the size of the U-Haul vehicles, they're going to be the smallest vehicles they have. Usually you see him running around 1995, I think it's 1995, isn't it?
Nineteen.
1919. Let's try and get this out there. So, again, he's willing to do, but after hearing the DRC, is it the DRC, DRC report? And the Planning Commission report, excuse me, the staff report, that since the original, we'll call him the "lessi," is nonconforming, and Ray is nonconforming, the new person leasing, they're not going to lease, I mean, they're not going to approve this no matter what we do here. Ironically enough, the University of Laverne doesn't even, doesn't even have vehicles going up and down Park Avenue anymore because of their own parking facility. So that is the problem. He can't use any of those spaces that are supposed to be allocated, the nine spaces, towards parking vehicles in the street. There just isn't enough space that he has to get in line, if you will, with the city for being able to park vehicles in there, instead of like getting nine people coming in at once anyhow. But I understand the rules, the regulations and regulations. But we were led to believe, I mean, when I first met with staff, before we know it, we're hiring an architect, we're writing out a check for almost $2,000 for a fee. There were other monies that were laid out by U-Haul and Ray, and this has gone over for the last 10 months, nine months, 10 to nine, 10 months? I think all of us agree and feel that if we knew that there was a chance and haze of getting this put through based on the quote "nonconforming," I think if we were told this upfront, 100 percent, not going to happen. Not 60 percent, maybe, maybe somebody on this commission will vote this way, or vote that way, or whatever, and you may have a chance. Staff has been very good. I know they have their rules and guidelines to follow, and I certainly don't want anybody in staff, and I know just about everybody in staff, and most people in this room, and the first thing I said to Ray, "Whatever you do, everything is going to be done legally." And he understood that. But it's going to be very difficult for Ray if he, because for months now, he was looking forward to being able to supplement his income. Again, not to get rich, but just pay the bills, especially since he doesn't, his wife is fighting the government. She's looking for a job, and they end up starting their own business, but it's tough. Again, if we knew then, you know, if we knew then what we know now, there's no way. I would have, I would have told Ray right from the gate, "This is not going to work. Don't even think about it." And, but maybe somebody could have hit us on the head saying, you know, and I personally think staff wanted to see it work. It's not like they told us, "Hey, forget it, don't even think about it, okay, you know." But here we are, which is why I am here, trying to help Ray.
Ray, do you have anything that you'd like to add, or?
I mean, I don't mind if you let me, I'm sorry, I don't mind if you let me, okay? I don't even, I don't get it from my previous boss, and I really believe in him, and that was 10 months ago. And he asked, "What is Ray?", and he find out where I am. And he, he came by, and he, he's been at every dealer in Southern California, and he said, "All Laverne need more U-Haul dealer because we're running short, even we have one or two." And I said, "What do you think?", he said, "This is perfect place." I said, "Well, you want to?", he said, "I want it to be, and I want to support you." And if I knew this is not going to happen, I would not be working 11 months back and forth on this. I'm good at fixing cars, I think maybe, you know that. So the thing is, it wasn't for us to just fight it. It was like there, and I can see how crowded are all the shops around. I mean, nobody is like freely, I can, I can have one van, says U-Haul on it, and do my things, and not bothering anybody, especially in our Park Avenue, it's like a cul-de-sac. There's nobody going through anymore. They closed the parking behind me. I mean, the place is huge. You can take an aerial shot and you see how many businesses are like, cars are on top of each other. I just wanted one van, says U-Haul on it. It's no big deal. And if Gary wouldn't support me to do it, I would not do it. Just an extra income, pay my bills, especially now my wife lost her job. So that's the only thing, not, not much. I'm not doing anything else, it's just a U-Haul dealer, that's it. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Michael, you mentioned something about an engine person. Is there somebody else leasing that property that you said is never on site? Did I?
No, there's nobody else leasing it. He owns the property.
Okay.
And he's the lessi, or lessor, I should say, for Ray, and that's what his specialty is. I asked staff...
Oh, I see, so the person who owns it is who you were talking about.
Correct.
Okay, correct, okay, good.
And I asked staff if they knew, in other words, if they were factoring in a number of vehicles that he has to have, which I know that's the case, I asked staff if they had actually talked to him and asked them what kind of work he does that doesn't require any vehicles come through that gate. And I was informed by staff, it doesn't make any difference what he does. Doesn't make any difference, I should, let me restate that. It doesn't make any difference what kind of automotive work he does as long as the word "automotive" is in it. So it's, it's just like, whatever was brought up, it was like, it was getting shot down. Okay? And it's been very, very frustrating. My heart goes out to this guy.
Thank you.
It really does.
Thank you. Any other questions? Could I have Candace come on?
Yeah.
Before you do, there are a couple things that I'd like to, let me ask you.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to at least address, that wouldn't be appropriate, I think, for Candace to address. The first is a suggestion that staff did not indicate upfront. Staff was very clear from the very beginning that there was a challenge to the parking, but if the applicant could come up with a way to satisfy the code, then we would support it. But otherwise, the way it existed, as it stood with the non-leonizing already in place, we couldn't support what existed. But if they had a way to address the parking, we would certainly pursue it. But all along the process, that was never able to be met, and I think we shared with council some of the communications previously that tried to convey that concern with the gap in the parking for this new use that was attempted to be added. So I'll let Candace speak to some of that, as far as getting into the specifics of your question, Mr. Mayor. But then also, to clarify, if there is no application, there's no need to make any changes there. We're not pursuing any check that's changed. They're grandfathered in the use that's there. It's illegal, nonconforming, it's outside what the new specific plan has identified as the new parking demands. Most of the operators that exist down there, they're not, if they're not making any changes, we're not going to require them to satisfy those parking deficiencies, even though we know that they exist because we're not called to that. With that, I will allow Candace.
Can I say one thing?
Never mind, Candace.
No, right?
Answer my question. Yeah. Does the applicant want to speak again? Is that okay?
That's fine, I agree.
Okay.
As far as what was done upfront, and as far as trying to figure out a way to make it work, it was physically, it was, it was almost impossible with the five vehicles in that area. You can't park one in front of another, you can't park one behind one another, you have to be able to maneuver there, which no shop does. They're all always jockeying vehicles in and out. And then when it went from five to nine, it would be physically, physically impossible to make it work. So when, if it was said, I'm not going to deny it, I remember it, but I'm getting a younger, right? That if you can figure out a way to make it work, then we'll, we'll see what we can do here. Well, if I knew that there would be nine vehicles, it was hard enough with five, but if I knew there was going to be nine vehicles, if the code was read, it wasn't a surprise. In fact, we were told on July 2nd, seven months, six months into it, that it was, it was read incorrectly and that it was going to go from five to nine. At that point, we should have said, "Never going to happen. Never going to happen. Physically impossible based on what the requirements are." So that's what I wanted to say. In other words, I understand what you said, Mr. Russel, but it couldn't have happened.
Michael, U-Haul gentleman available for comment?
Yes, he is.
Please step up to the podium.
Please step up to the podium. Now, if I'm hearing this correctly, Ray's Automotive needs to have two U-Haul trucks on the property, available for rent, is that correct?
No, sir. No, I, I, all.
So are no trucks are needed?
No, one truck, yeah.
One truck.
To be a U-Haul dealer, because this is not a franchise.
Okay, then why don't, why don't we have you change your rule?
Okay. How can I do that, sir?
Don't, don't make you put any trucks on there.
Well, we wish we could do that, but we.
I wish we could do it too. Thank you very much.
I'd like to clarify one item. Can I ask you?
Is your microphone on? Not that mic, that mic.
No, well, it's really for Ray, but if you're speaking for him. Now, when you start a business, you're given all the documents. Now, you have a copy, I would assume, of the Arrow, Arrow Corridor specific plan, and that's where it specifically says per square footage. There's one space needed for every 250 square feet. You have 2,140 square feet, so that right there tells you nine parking spots are needed. So, I wouldn't say the city, I wanna clarify it, because you're saying the city staff told you a certain amount, but then they tell you it's nine. And so, but, you know, if you have a copy of that, and you should, any business should have all the documents before you start a business of what's required. But that specifically says it in that, of course, plan, the specific plan for Arrow Highway.
Number one, we never received any documents. None.
I'm not talking about now, while you were applying. I'm talking about when you start your business, you always get documents to know, "What is my requirements?", and this and that, and, you know, you apply for a permit, I would believe that you would get all those documents. But do you, in other words, you're saying you never saw it?
I never even got a copy. I never saw it. Took the staff six months to find out, "Oh, it's not five, it's nine." And you think, "But I have to find out all this by myself, and I'm not a planner or anything. I know there's parking, I know that place been there forever, I took a lease, and I start my business." But to be honest, you know, I don't know that's 200 square, about per car.
Ray, would you stand up to the mic, please, unless you, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry. It took the staff like five to six months to find out, "Oh, no, it's not five, it's nine." So for me to figure it out right away if it's not there. Like I said, we started, we paid deposit for CUP, and we paid the estate. U-Haul was all along going forward with us. We didn't know we're gonna get to here. We thought it's, we can keep reducing the parking of U-Haul, we're gonna get through. Like now, we're willing to put just a van. I won't take any reservation overnight. I can always get the van out of the premises before I close. You can do any reservation you want. With the new technology now, I, he, you know, Mr. Gary can explain it better. There's no way I'm gonna be parking U-Haul trucks on Arrow Highway and that they were. It's just, I can get a reservation here and there, but at the same time, I can do my own thing, like putting batteries for it, then install hitches, and doing some extra money just to pay my bills. But I'm not gonna have like three, four reservations at the time, and people are coming here to pick up five trucks. No, it's not, it's some case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Say one more thing?
Yeah, one last thing.
On 24th of January, Gary submitted a request, as he has specified today.
When you start talking to Candace.
And staff stated that the information was presented to other staff members and community development director, and due to the lack of parking, and then in parentheses, no striped spaces, the CUP could not be supported. Business that operates there today does not have adequate parking. And staff would not be able to support a business that requires more parking. If you have any follow-up or any questions, feel free to contact me. Well, I saw that, January 24th, I went up for hundreds of hours on this. I contacted and met with staff. And I asked staff, that's when I asked staff, have they contacted the less, the owner, about what he does? And that's what I was told about parking, you know, whether he's, doesn't make any difference, as long as the word "automotive" is in type. When I said no striped spaces, we got into a discussion about that. And it kinda started the ball rolling. I said, "Would it help if I went and got spaces striped? Would that help? That would, might look better, and give them more reason to approve it." And staff agreed, but staff said, "Don't do it yet." A map, a layout of the building was presented, but it really wasn't up to staff's requirements. And that's when we agreed to get an architect. She said, "That would be a great idea. Be a great idea, get an architect." I said, "Okay, good." So, I'm thinking, like I think any normal person would think, hey, we may be making some progress here. I mean, I got all kinds of stuff, all kinds of plans that were submitted along the months. I would have to be an idiot, you know, considering I'm such an idiot, for somebody of the, the, the staff and the position that that staff member holds, which I respect, to tell me, "You're wasting your time. You are wasting your time." Okay? There's no way I would've gone further. I would've said, "Ray, you gotta stop. It's not gonna work. You're wasting your money, thousands of dollars down the drain." And, you know, I heard other reasons why it wasn't gonna work, which I won't repeat here. I think, to be honest, when he leased the building, when he leased that space, I think, with all due respect, I think somebody from staff, somebody from the, the, the building here, okay, somebody, somebody has knowledge, should've said, "By the way, this, this spot that you're leasing is a non-conforming spot, and this is what it means. You'll probably have a very, very difficult time making any kind of changes. In fact, almost impossible, based on the fact that as far as staff is concerned, you have the owner, non-conforming, and now the person who is leasing, non-conforming. How can you do anything? Nobody told him that. Nobody said anything to him. The owner certainly didn't know, hey, I tell you what, this is non-conforming, I can't give good, good judgment here, I'll lease it to you, because you won't be able to do anything. It's not gonna do that."
The owner of the, the owner of the building is, is the engine guy, right? I mean, he's the one who presented it. So, are you, are you saying that he is not aware that that property has limitations?
Not like we know now.
Well, I'm not saying he didn't mention it, I'm just saying, did he know, like me? So.
He's, how old is he? Ninety? Eighty-nine.
Okay.
He may have known at one point, but he certainly doesn't know now.
Okay, let's, let's.
But I think that, I think somebody from the city owner, knowing what I know now and what they know, should've said something to this person leasing that space.
Okay.
That's all, sir.
Thank you, Michael. Michael, is he, is he still doing engines?
Yes.
I mean actively?
Well, doesn't do, he doesn't like, he doesn't do it one day. He's eighty-nine. You know, he doesn't do enough to make a good living at it. It's basically something to do at his age.
Is all the stuff in the surrounding driveway area that's under the canopies, is that all his stuff?
No, it's not.
Is that?
But there isn't that much under those canopies.
Just machining and tools and things like that?
Exactly, exactly.
Because it looks like there's storage on the backside as you drive through, but on the right, it looks like some mills, some laths, things like that. But that has nothing to do with the engine shop, is that clear?
No, that's correct. And if anything needs to be taken out, if it helps. Okay. Thank you.
Follow-up questions for Candace?
Can you follow, can you follow up, please, Candace?
I have one more for her that I think got confused in the COVID cases. Candace, in the number of submittals that ever came through, was there ever a design that satisfied the five or the nine?
No.
So the five was never met as far as additional parking either?
No, and it's likely impossible, as the applicant said.
That was my first concern, was the fact that information was given for fives and then nine, but it really was, it didn't matter.
Right.
Because the non-conforming side couldn't support even five.
Correct.
Let alone nine.
Correct.
I, no, it's a public comment, we have to wait. Okay, we have a public, is now, if anybody wants to talk on this subject, you're welcome to come forward, please either fill out a speaker card prior to, or after you speak, and please give it to our city clerk. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and come back. Jim, you wanna start?
I can understand how frustrating this is to the owner, and also to Michael. We do have rules and regulations in the city, and we try to keep those because it keeps our city what it is today, which is organized, runs efficiently. It's not always perfect. I've, I've had discussions with Ray, Mike, also with Candace, Eric, also with Mr. Russi. And if there would be a solution, of some solution, which would be if we could take and you could use one U-Haul truck and park it adjacent to the building on an empty lot, would be awesome. That would be, wonder if we could make an arrangement with your neighbor next door, and then you could still function?
That's something I forgot to say. Can I say something? No?
Anyway, I just, we have to, have to stick with our rules and regulations and with our, and as a business owner, I understand, you know, anytime you can take a chance to make additional money, it's great, it's just that unfortunately, we didn't look at the lease. The lease wasn't checked into, your owner wasn't forthright in just saying it was a non-conforming, it was grandfathered in. As a council member, I would love to see, be able to do that, but we also have to make sure that we keep up our conformity with our rules and regulations. I just, I would love to do it for you, but if there's some other way that we could do it to get a, you know, if there's any way you could do it to keep that property, or clean up your property and come back at another time and, and clear it out and see if there's any way that it would pencil out that way, I just don't know if it'll work. But I commend staff, this has been very frustrating for them too, they've done a lot of work on this. I think that maybe some miscommunication with the applique, application, putting it in, maybe just misunderstanding what's going on. I think that it's just unfortunate that unfortunately, it's just not conforming to what we need for parking, and it's frustrating.
Okay, here?
I'm sorry it's not working out for you. I own land in Laverne, and I have to know as a landowner what I can and can't do. And, and I also, when I try, try to figure out what we can do under the circumstances and what are limited. And I also work for Southern California Edison, and I work with our, both our interconnection folks and our transmission and distribution folks. And there are rules and regulations that staff for regulated utility are similar to the staff of the city. Our planning staff are not decision makers, so they cannot flat out say, "No way in heck can this be done." That would be overstepping their role in this process. I understand the enthusiasm and the idea of being able to get the job done and to be able to get the permit so that you can have the two businesses. I heard you say, though, at the same time, that had you known nine spaces wouldn't have fit, we would not have come this far. Well, that was known in July, and this is November, and you have come this far. So I understand that enthusiasm, don't get me wrong. But this is a small deal, I get it. You're a, you're a single individual, however, if we start treading over our own codes and enforcement requirements, then who knows who's gonna come in and just rip us apart as a community? And for that, we cannot let that happen.
I've already said what I need to say.
Yes, and I understand what you're going through. Small businesses are very special in this community, and we push residents to use small businesses. But we do have city codes that we have to abide for. All the other businesses go by the same regulations with square footage per parking space. I stand behind that. I also stand behind our planning commission. We have very educated, well-spoken people on that commission, and I respect what they do.
Thank you. I, I've known Gary for a long time. Ray, not only once, but Gary, that's Gary. And does a great job, so I'll start off with it. And, and I wrote down four things that I think any one of them could be a solution. Some of them aren't necessarily workable, but I think they're something to talk about. One is, throw the vehicle someplace else. I know there's a vacant lot next to it, I don't know who owns it, I know that it just, it's almost, you know, there's no ingress and egress out of it, there's no curb cut in it, I don't know how you get to it, but maybe if you could work a deal out with it, you can, you know, put a fence in and maybe park it there. So that's, that's an option. Strike the building. It's 2,100 square feet, 2,140 square feet, on a 4,800 square foot lot. Half of this lot is building, which hurts you a lot, because you don't make money in that building. I know that, because I know what you do. So, maybe the eighty-nine-year-old guy will help you remove some of the building, or buy the building, and then do it yourself. And the second thing is, which I think Charlie was a little bit too, is, is when Gary came to you and said, "I want you to install hitches," which I think you can do really well, and I would be the best hitch person in Southern California, and put a U-Haul sign up that says, "I do U-Haul hitches." But does he want you to do U-Haul hitches, or does he want you to rent U-Haul vehicles? Because if he wants you to do rent vehicles, that's different. But if he wants you to install hitches, I think that's great. I don't know any place around that installs hitches. I just, I don't know, I don't know where to go. And I rented lots of U-Haul vehicles over the years. I've never seen a place that I've rented one that had the ability to install hitches. So I would talk to Gary again, say, "Gary, let me be the best U-Haul hitch installer in Southern California, but wait this for me, and I'll show you how good I am. And you don't need any additional permit to install hitches in your business, from what I understand. You can just move forward and start installing them. But please, Gary, remove that requirement, and, and allow this man to continue doing what he's doing for his family." End with that? Like to?
I'll make a motion for the city council to uphold Planning Commission's decision to deny case 38-19 CUP.
I'll second it.
And vote, please. Thank you.
We'll bring this back to your next agenda with the resolution formally denied.
Thank you. Okay, we will move into other comments. Remember, this is items that are not on the agenda. I know why you're here, because I got the same thing you did. And the person with the log in the locker.
He likes your first name.
I meant your dad.
Oh, God.
You're on camera too. Hey Dad, how you doing?
He said, "I'm Robin's dad."
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Attorney. I received a bit of propaganda from Jonathan Prankel, New Urban West. Did everybody get it? So I was just livid, I guess, because I can see that it's a lot of manipulation. I'm going to play the good cop, bad cop thing. I'm going to pretend like I'm not part of this entity when we know that all the players, the past owner, the current owner, and this proposed developer have worked together several times and are currently working together. So I just felt like I needed to come and address this for my neighbors and for other Laverne residents in speaking about this new plan of throwing, to see what... Stick something to the wall and see what happens, see what the residents do. Three hundred homes in this one area. I believe they're trying to pit one side of Laverne against another side of Laverne. I don't know who I feel sorry for most, the people that live on those residential streets that would be the new thoroughfare for a thousand cars. You know, or somebody like me that just bought thinking I plot on an open space behind me, and now I'm going to have years of construction behind me and small, high-density senior homes. Now, the one big thing is that we know that when you're looking for a retirement home, you're not looking for a two-story. You're just not. You're not, you know, nobody's thinking that that's the retirement home. So I don't know if they think we're not going to see that. I think purpose, I think that a developer might think, especially in the culture of what we have going on in Sacramento, that if we rezon the land, then they will have a foothold on doing whatever they want. And high-density, here we come. Because I think that that is the way it's going to... Maybe Sacramento is going to try and force the cities on how to plan out their land. So I think if we even think about rezoning the land, that's what might happen, is that they're going to try and tell us how to zone it. So they might say, "Oh yeah, we're going to do single-family home, high-density," but that's not, you know, it won't unfold that way. So I'm just here to ask that... That, and then also the bar and grill. I don't know about you, but I moved over there to get away from some of that. I don't want a bar and grill next to my house. So I'm just bringing this up and asking that you all continue to support that land stay open. I don't really believe people are calling up New Urban West and complaining to them about what's happening on that property. It's not the best-case scenario right now, but I think what bothers me the most is that when they purchased this land with three-point-six-five, that this is what they envisioned, and that maybe they'll put three, let's say, they'll walk away, but by the time they sell all these lands and make a hundred million dollars off a three-point-six-five investment by the time they're done, their net might be a hundred million. I think that's insane to think that people can come into our city and buy a cheap piece of land with the idea of never letting the golf course have a chance, purposely running it down and taking away, or not doing anything for it to bring it back up to get more members, and then go, "Oh, well, we tried our best, and it didn't work out," and that was never the plan. So I just ask that you continue to stay strong, and that we keep our open space, and, you know, hopefully we'll just have a little more deer walking around on the property or something like that, and more bushes and stuff like that, and... But to not rezone the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. It's not how your dad told you to act. Is there any other public comment? Anna?
Hello, Anna Anderson? I want to kind of go off of what she said, but on a different road. I think that we have overbuilt in North Laverne. We're taking away a lot of the open space, and this golf course thing scares me. Because, you know, we have two roads down that hill, basically. And if there's ever an emergency up there, if there's ever a fire running through there, if there's ever a earthquake with gas lines exploding, we have to get down that hill. And we've put too many houses up there. And I think we're still building. I don't know if that one park next to Mountain Springs is done yet, but we're still building on open land. And now you go in next door and you hear all these people in Southern Laverne complaining about the coyotes. Well, where do you think the coyotes are going to go? They go down the Wash and into South Laverne, because they're losing their territories. They're territorial. They need a place, and they need food, so they're going to eat all the people's pets. So if we cut down Sierra Laverne, and I know you said you're not going to rezone it, but, you know, this is just... In a few years, we might have different councils, you know, five, six years from now. And they might say, "Let's just rezone it. It's money." Of course, it's money for the city to rezone that and put houses. But then we're going to be up there. How are we going to get down the hill with vehicles coming up in emergencies and us trying to get down those hills? We got Wheeler with four lanes, we got Esperanza with two. We've got to have emergency vehicles coming up, and we've got to get down. Look what happened in Paradise last year. People were burnt alive in their cars trying to get out. We really have to think... There's a maximum capacity up there of one-hundred-and-thirty-six people in this room. We need a maximum capacity of how many houses we can support up there with the roads coming down. The maximum capacity is for safety, just like we have to have safety up there. So I would like, I don't know if we have anything like this, or if the county has anything like this, but we really need an evaluation of how many homes could be maximum capacity up there. Because if that golf course comes in with three hundred homes, I don't know how the heck we're going to get down that hill if there's ever an emergency. And you can say, "Hey, there's never been an emergency." We don't know what's going to happen. We really should have somebody unbiased come in and look at that area and figure out how many cars can get down that hill with emergency cars coming up to be safely get out of that area if we have to. We're kind of built in up there. You live up there, don't you? Yes, I think so. And we have to get down. And I don't see how we're going to get down with another three hundred homes. I think we're overbuilding. We've got to, you know, it's just a cycle of action. We build up there, the wildlife has to go somewhere. Now we got South Laverne from here, you know, below baseline complaining about all the coyotes. They want to cull them. It's a mess. I don't want to call coyotes, by the way. Three thousand dollars a trap, please, don't do it. Anyways, but there's a lot of complaints about it. Because they're, you know, they're not used to living with the coyotes. We're used to living with up there. We do things to keep our pets safe, but, you know, people aren't, who never had it before, they never had to deal with it, and now they're getting upset about it. So we really have to think before we start building any more up there. Now, people who already have property up there, and it's already zoned to build on, fine. There's nothing you can do about that. If they want to build one day, let them build. But we need to stop the giving out permits for these homes. We just need to stop. We've got open land. We come to the city because we love the open spaces. We love to see the mountains, you know? Most of us who live up there, we deal with it. But now it's starting to trickle down into parts of Laverne. They don't like it. They don't like those coyotes in their backyard. They're not used to, you know, what to do with, what do I do with my pet? How do I get, go to the bathroom? We all figured that out already up in the hills, but they haven't, and they're upset about it. And I already know what's coming. They're going to come and ask for culling, and I don't think we can afford culling. Three days. San Dimas is going to pay three thousand dollars a trap. That's ridiculous. And you have to know about the animals. You have to know, you know, how they're going to survive. It's... They'll just breed again, because it'll be, because people will be killing the coyotes, and then there'll be more food for the mothers to eat, and then they'll have more babies, and we'll have more coyotes. It's a cycle. So I think I would like, and I don't know how to do this, maybe staff can answer me?
Yeah, I've got all this stuff too.
So I'd like to know, maybe staff, is there anybody, any agency that can come up and reevaluate North Laverne? Look at the roads coming down. I mean, we can go down San Dimas Boulevard, Canyon, because it's open now, but all those people, if we ever have a fire, that's going to be in San Dimas Canyon too, definitely. So all those people are going to have to come down that two-lane road. Then we got the little roads that go down into the Lewis Homes area. They're not getting out that way. All those people here are going to be trying to get out. We need some safety issues up there. And we need to put codes in on how, what's the maximum capacity building going to be up there. Like this, you know, I moved up there when they were building in eighty-five, and nobody probably wanted them to build up there then, but it's overbuilt now.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Mayor. I'm going to piggyback on all of that, because it is scary to think about. I was looking at the little plan, the little thing that they emailed out today, and those little three hundred tiny little boxes kind of, the only exit out of that whole area was on the bogey, which is just exiting into another neighborhood. And then they've got to go through that neighborhood to find another way out, and it's just, that's insane. That is a death trap for seniors even, if they do want a two-story house. But the rest of us that are up there, there are very few ways out, and, you know, they go fire over the hill, or like Anna said, all of these things are very possible. We live in California, there are fires, there are earthquakes. Earthquakes, gas lines, I just finished CERT training. Yes, it could happen. And we are at the limit. We need to work it on the general plan. Go up with it. Let's stop, it is currently open space, let's keep it that, not just because we like the open space, which we really do, but because the topography, the canyons, the hills, if there's no other way to do it, that would even be wise. So just make a statement.
Thank you, Anna.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just so we don't get in this direction here of what was submitted, just so we're clear. Staff in the city just became aware of this email today. Somebody shared it with us. Thank you. This plan, whatever the schematic that was sent out, was apparently sent to all the residents up in that area. It is not a submittal. The city hasn't even been given anything. We were not party to even the email that was received by everybody. And I just, I think I speak, certainly for the rest of the council who can't speak right now, that there has been no change in the position that the city stands by that when we first started talking about Sierra Laverne. It is zoned as agriculture. There is no vision to see any type of change in that. We have shared this information that we just received up on the Sierra Laverne website so that we can make sure that those who aren't are certainly made aware of the same thing that we're sharing with you tonight. If there isn't any application, if there ever was to be, we would certainly make sure the residents were engaged and at least made aware of it. So I just kind of want to put everybody a little bit at ease. There is nothing that has really been advanced in any way. This is the first week for me on this, and based on what I was reading, I understand what you were saying, that, you know, they're playing one against the other, but it really didn't even seem to rise to the level of we're moving forward with this. So, you know, we'll continue to monitor what is out there, maybe reaching out to New Urban to see what their motivation was here. We'll try and do that. I don't know that we'll get any response back, but just wanted to at least, as I could, speak on the behalf of those that are here, that there really isn't, there isn't anything that's being considered. And to the question about future development, I'm going to look at Eric. I don't think there's many other areas up in North Laverne that even have the opportunity. They would have to go through a whole rezoning similar to what would be here. So it's very limited in the opportunity for any type of other development.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the comments? Public comment?
Mr. Mayor, City Council staff, Jim Murphy, Raymond Drive. Today I received an email that I thought I would share with everybody tonight. Kind of expected this email for some time now, but since it came to me, I guess I was on the distribution because of my role with the CERT program as the program manager. But it was from our former fire chief. Came to his staff, and I guess I got a copy of it for that reason. And I thought, originally when I got it, you know, it was nice to read it. But I emailed the, our former fire chief back and asked him if it would be appropriate to read tonight, and he gave his permission. We didn't hear from him for eighteen months through all this. We heard a lot of things about him, never had a chance to hear from him. Certainly respect that with all the legality that was involved. But I thought I'd, as I read through this, there was a lot of wisdom in it. And I thought, not only appropriate for the fire department that received it from him today, but also for our community in the wake of what's going on. So I thought I'd share it. It kind of illustrates the class and character of our former fire chief. And also, you know, I think even in his farewell, what you're going to hear in this email is that he continued to be a leader. So let me read it for you. This email is to advise all LVFD staff that Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, was my last day as fire chief. Although I am leaving Laverne, I have the opportunity to remain involved with the fire service, and I look forward to many more years in the profession I love and that has provided so much for me and my family. Over the past seven years as fire chief, I have hired or promoted many of you. Each time, without exception, the individuals spoke of their interest in helping to improve the fire department and serving this community. I would encourage all of you to remember why you entered the fire service and to always prioritize service to others over self, especially the citizens of Laverne. I leave you with a few final thoughts. I hope you remember that statements made repeatedly and with passion still do not make them accurate. That if you can't disagree with others respectfully, you will lose that respect. That attacking the reputation of others to advance your narrative tarnishes their reputation, but also yours. That selecting which department rules you will follow, especially if you supervise others, will result in everyone following the rules that they choose. This is very dangerous in our profession. And finally, if you are not part of the solution, you become part of the problem. A fire chief should celebrate the many accomplishments with his department, but must also take action when those high expectations are not met. The community we serve deserves no less than that. I wish you all well, be safe, and always strive to provide the best possible service to the citizens of Laverne, regardless of what position you hold. Each one of you has the power to make a difference. Respectfully, Pete Jankowski, Fire Chief, Laverne Fire Department.
Thanks for your time. Is there anybody else that would like to... Is there anybody else that would like to address the council comment? Okay, we will move to item nine, council comments, conferences, meetings.
And Mr. Mayor, before you do, if I could just add something to the end of that, which is very important. In the announcement of Chief Jankowski's retirement, after twenty years, we will now be coordinating a recruitment to permanently fill the vacancy. And that process is expected to take three to six months to do it properly. In the meantime, we'll be exploring options to temporarily fill the fire chief vacancy. Chief Summers, who has been that interim, did he? Oh, right there, thank you. He'll stay on for a period of time, but he does have limits under the contract that has been provided to him under pers, so we're going to certainly take advantage of that to the extent we can. But will not be enough time to extend out through the entire recruitment process, so we'll be looking for another interim to fill in over that gap and expect to have that worked out in the next month or so. So I'll be back to you before that, but certainly for the benefit of the community and for the department to understand, we do have a plan going forward to try and make sure we have that. we do have a plan going forward to try and make sure we have that, that leadership.
Thank you. Okay, council comments. Gerald, you wanna start?
Good.
Robin?
At this time, I'm really hearing what Bob just announced and thank you for sharing that letter, Jim. That was very touching. I want to publicly say thank you to Pete Jankowski for his generous service to our community. And I wish him well in his retirement with him in his family.
Halloween downtown, thank you for staff. Guys did an unbelievable job. That was so much fun. Sorry, just talked to everybody here. Okay, let me start over.
Halloween.
Halloween. It was a great time in Laverne and the city did an unbelievable job, staff. The coloring contest, the gifts, LB3, Mayor Kendrick, Mr. Rosales was there. Myself, it was just a kick in all the stores and all our businesses with candy and the kids dressed up. It was, it was just a fun day, a really fun day, and that's what Laverne's all about. And then the other one was the fact that we had the open house for the fire police on Saturday. Even with a rogue rain that lasted, what, three minutes, but dumped everything, but between the fire and the police, they did an unbelievable job. Lots of people there, lots of kids, lots of families. Just put on a great show. Just, we have just great services here in the city and they're really proud of it. I'm proud of everyone that was there, all the staff that was there, all the police officers, the firefighters, the kids and the parents, myself. We all had a great time. Thank you.
I will join Councilmember Hepburn on the public safety open house. That was a great event. I did not get to participate in the downtown Halloween, but I had plenty of wonderful little children walk past my house in great costumes. It is truly a treat. I think, I think Laverne is a jewel that attracts a lot of trick-or-treaters and I'm proud of that. I attended the Laverne-San Dimas Education Foundation last Wednesday where we elected a new board for the Education Foundation. And also, if you have not heard, a, the Unified School District has kicked off with the support of LBS, Laverne-San Dimas Education Foundation. That's just a hard acronym to say in a long name. So it's one of those things, you pick your poison. Anyway, they kicked off a wellness campaign for the schools where they'll have male health professionals at each school and their, the Education Foundation's trying to raise about a hundred thousand dollars to help with the school district in that effort. So I encourage all the residents of Laverne and San Dimas to contribute to that wellness program. It's, it's certainly a program to be proud of and to support. Let's see. I gotta keep my head focused on comments because I know what's coming next after you speak, but my mom's on the next page. Anyway. This Friday night, Benita High School is playing its CAF, first CAF game of this fall against Highland and Palmdale. It's a long road trip, but hopefully the Bearcats will be successful.
You have a daughter that's, you have a daughter that participates, right?
Yes, yes.
Cheerleader, proud of her.
She's a cheerleader and I'm proud of her, it's her senior year.
A couple of things, I wanna piggyback on, on the Halloween venture that has been mentioned. Downtown, they just keep pitting it out of the park and we only had eight hundred and thirty-five trick-or-treaters at our house that night, down from a thousand, which was a little disappointing. My wife wasn't feeling well, so I had to do it all, but it was so much fun with those kids. There's some amazing costumes up there and the best ones are handmade. There was somebody that came dressed as a shower curtain. It's like, where did they get the camera?
Was that Charlie's?
The second thing is, is Councilmember Hepburn and I together were on Saturday afternoon at the Glendora Episcopal Church to honor a new Laverne resident in the receiving of his Eagle badge. And it was spectacular. We've, these, these kids are amazing. I, he earned over thirty merit badges and you have to have twenty-one to be able to become an Eagle Scout. We had an Eagle Scout in Laverne receive over a hundred merit badges. So it was a, a one-time, so these kids' knowledge is absolutely spectacular. So, I'd like to say thank you. I wanna get back a little bit on Anna's comments about the coyotes. You don't have, they're not all yours. When I was growing up here, the orange groves started at A Street and went north. As a little kid, we've always had coyotes down here. So, they're all over town. And you need to protect your pets. We've had critters left on our front lawn before. The coyotes many times have peed on our front, front screen. And we are told that because our neighbors get up early and the coyotes, it's throughout Front Porch, right? Why wouldn't they wanna be there?
Can't say they are not, dog.
So, but they are here and I think they're here to stay, but we'll do everything we can to protect all the animals that are pets and certain people. So, we will move to item nine and that's the, your city manager.
Or Tim, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have an E for a closed section.
Closed session?
It's other government code section 54956 dot six. Six or eight, seven.
Eight.
It's to meet and confer with property negotiators. The property is nine, 1943 White Avenue. Negotiator, city manager, assistant city manager and community development director. Negotiating parties, Laverne and Gold Line Footbell Extension. And there are two conflicts. One conflict is Councilmember Carter, as she is on the Metro Board, Gold Line Board, and asks that she can't serve on both sides of this. So she will be conflicting out as well as Councilmember Davis, who owns property that is within the proximity of the AA. Okay, and there will be nothing to report out of that.
Okay, we will move to adjournment. And first of all, I'd like to thank the Davis family for being here. I know Eric is here, so thank you, Eric, for being here. On September 30th, a very special resident of Laverne passed away. And that was Dorothy Brand Davis, happens to be Mire Davis's mother. The native of Laverne passed away while napping at 1:00 PM on that Monday. That's the way I wanna go. She was born at Pomona Valley Hospital on December 8th, 1929, just after the Depression hit. Followed shortly thereafter by her twin brother Darrell. Her parents, Catherine and Jesse Brand, brought Dorothy and Darrell to join other siblings, Betty, Lloyd and Bernice, to their new home on Third Street in Laverne, California. Youngest sister Marion would be born a few years later. Dorothy graduated from Benita High School in 1947. Had some burn, received her bachelor's from Laverne in 1952. Her master's in 1971, both from Laverne College, and a Juris Doctorate in 1976 after the facility changed to the University of Laverne. As a youth, Dorothy was active in the Church of the Brothers First Peace Caravan Movement that gave birth to Brother Volunteer Service, a pacifist alternative to military service, which I know members, my, my, my mother-in-law served in that capacity as well as many other people along, over the years. She authored three books for children, The Tall Man, The Middle Man and The Little Man, about historical figures in the Church of the Brothers. Dorothy married J. Rodney Davis on July 12th, 1950, while she was still in college. Throughout their life together, they dreamed and executed projects, large and small. They successfully navigated social change and they have certainly passed it on to their, to their kids and actively embraced the ideals of equality and social justice. Dorothy taught in the Chicago Public District in mid-fifties until she was pregnant with her first child. She taught elementary school in the Azusa School District in the 1960s until wearing a black armband and protested Vietnam War prompted her ouster. She taught sewing and English at San Antonio Continuing High School in the Claremont School District until she retired in the early 1980s. After earning her law degree, Dorothy clerked for Judge Paul Egley on the court-mandated integration efforts of the Los Angeles Unified School District. I don't know whether she slept. Dorothy was very creative and artistic. She worked in ceramics, textiles and watercolors, directing large-class projects and executing her own works. I know she didn't sleep. In 1964, she designed and managed the building of the primary residence, which included an art shack. Throughout her life, she loved working with all children, students, nieces, nephews, her own children and her grandchildren to create art and beauty elsewhere. If you've not seen Eric's artwork, you are missing a treasure. It's around town, please make it a point to do so. Dorothy is survived by her sisters Bernice and Marion and her twin brother Darrell by her four children, sons Carl of Long Island, California, daughter Sarah of La Cañada, sons Mire and Eric here tonight of Laverne, thirteen grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. There will be a memorial service at 2:00 PM on Sunday, December 8th, Laverne Church of the Brothers on East Street of Benita. I would get there early, I think it'll be full. It'll be a great event to celebrate a great life. Eric and Mire, we're all sorry that you've lost such an important person in your lives, but we celebrate you, the life that you did live and the creation of two amazing young men in our lives with that.